Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for the afternoon of February 4th. And I believe it will be Councilmember Jimenez, is that right? We'll be introducing our invicator, Abbot Hitek Hi of the Chuang Ba Phukh, Vietnamese Temple. And we're grateful to have several of the clergy here from the temple. It's wonderful. We'll welcome you. Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. So Mayor, as you said, Chuang Ba Phukh is a Vietnamese temple off Center Road in District 2, right on the border of District 2 and District 7. It's led by Abbot Hitek. Chuang Ba Phukh welcomes everyone from all neighborhoods, backgrounds, ages, ethnicities, and religions at all times. The temple was founded in 2007 and settled in District 2 in 2008. And since then, the temple's chapel has been a staple in the community. The temple is often open, or is always open, for walk-in visitors with the intent to bring harmony to the community and to provide a space where people can find their peace. This temple not only teaches about Buddhism, but also is about compassion and harmony. With about 300 regular members, the temple welcomes all residents to come for spiritual support and other needs, such as healthcare information, Vietnamese language school, martial arts school, and a meditation center. Please join me in welcoming Abbot Hitek, who will be performing a prayer invocation reflecting on love, kindness, and mindfulness.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is our honor to be here today to offer the Peace and Harmony Prayer to the council member, the city mayors, the officers, and every resident of San Jose. Thank you very much. (Music) 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 Compassion, contemplation. May all be peaceful, happy, and ease in body as well as spirit. May all be safe and free from any harm. May all be free from any fear and anxiety. May all be able to gain understanding from loving, kindness, and compassion. May all be able to grow the seed of joy and happiness every day from breathing. May all be free from excitement and frustration, but not be impetuous. (Music) 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 Thank you for joining us in the invocation prayer. And we would like to pray for peace and harmony in our city.
Kamong, thank you. Abbot Hitek Hi and all of the members, thank you so much for joining us and sharing your prayer with us in the entire city. Now I'd ask if everyone in the audience would join us as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Councilmember Yip, I believe we'll be presenting accommodation to Dao Hu for her exceptional volunteer service at the Educational Park Branch Library and her dedication to inclusion and literacy.
Hello. Dao Hu, come on down. Melissa, you want to come on down too, or take photos? Okay. Hi, I am here to present a combination to Dao Yuan Hu. Come on up there. Dao is a member of our community. She's a volunteer at the Educational Branch Library in District 4. And since November 2018, she's participated in Storytime, not only just doing the Storytime that we all know happens at our libraries, but she's taken the effort to translate children's books into Chinese. So essentially creating an additional Chinese Storytime for Chinese speakers and also making herself available to educate the community about her homeland of China. And so, not just for the effort that she's put into it, but the dedication and consistency she's done for over a year now, I would like to recognize her exceptional volunteer service and present her with this combination on behalf of the mayor and the city council. Thank you, Dao. Say a few words.
Thank you so much. I'm also glad to hear, I'm very lucky to work with Melissa in Education Park Branch Library. Our program focuses on children's early education. It provides a lot of help for children to read with different language. Children are the future of the world, so it's my honor to do something for children while serving our community. Thank you.
(Applause) I should also mention that Storytime has grown to over 60 students, or students, 60 kids since she's been volunteering. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Councilmember Peralos, you wanted to change the order of some items, is that right?
Yeah, just a small swap, which would be if we could move item 8.1 to be heard before item 7.1.
Okay. Is that the motion?
Second.
All right, that's a motion and a second. Any comments? Next up is the closed session report. Rick?
Yes, Mayor. Council met in closed session this morning. We have nothing to report out.
All right, on to the consent calendar. We have one person like to speak on item 2.8, I believe, the labor negotiations relating to PD communications. Are there any other items to pull from consent? That's 2.10 from Councilmember Carrasco. I'd also like to pull the travel report. I believe that's 2.5. And are there any other items? Okay, is there a motion on the remainder?
(Inaudible)
All right, let's vote. Item 2.5, I just wanted to disclose that I've traveled to Washington DC for the US Mayor's Conference, an opportunity to speak and meet with Senator Kamala Harris and with her staff about some housing issues. We know there are some challenges with financing, need to use in particular, that we could use some federal help with. Should note that Senator Harris had been up till 2:00 in the morning per night on an impeachment hearing, met with me, I think, at 8:30 the next morning. So be assured that we have a very hardworking senator working for us in DC. And also spoke on four panels at the US Mayor's Conference relating to various issues from our efforts on digital inclusion to gun violence and sustainability, as well as resiliency of our electric grid. So there's a lot of interest nationally in what we're doing on all those fronts here in San Jose. So rest assured that the work that our team is doing, our staff is doing on each of those issues has certainly captured a lot of attention. And that has a lot of interest from a lot of my colleagues. And I'm constantly getting emails and texts about the good work that's being done here at the city. So I think people should know, in case you don't hear it enough, that there are a lot of folks who appreciate the great work that our city team is doing. All right, if there's any other travel report, we'll hear it now. If not, ask for a motion.
(Inaudible)
Okay, on to item 2.8, which are labor negotiations. I believe Jennifer Hearn would like to speak. This is the side letter agreement between the city, Ask Me MEF, IFPTE, and CAM. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hearn. I work for San Jose Police Communications. I've been here a couple of times. And I feel it's important that when you come and ask, make a plea for help. And that is honored and acknowledged, that we also need to acknowledge, thank you for hearing us out and for stepping outside the box. Thank you, Jennifer Shembry and her group, for letting us kind of go outside the box and hash some things out. On behalf of Police and Fire Communications, we thank you. We were able to retain two people on the PD side because of that. We are losing four, two to retirements, which is going to happen, two for another agency because they make $25,000 more, but I know we're working on that. But we also have some in training, so we're hoping that will kind of help us bring the numbers up a little bit. I also would like to take this moment to publicly thank my coworkers for PD and Fire Communications. They need to be recognized that they remain resilient, they dig deep to keep the 911 services afloat. We are not out of the woods yet. We are still in a critical situation, but they give every day to help the community to take that moving. I'm confident that we can continue to all work together to find solutions. I'm really hoping that that happens. And that you guys will support also the AB 1945 bill to see us as first responders. This job is no longer just picking up the phone and sending help. It's so much more than that. And it really needs to be recognized as such. So I want to thank you all very much for your help.
Jennifer, thank you. Thank you for the comments. I also want to thank Jennifer Shembry and the bargaining teams, both for the city as well as for each of the individual unions. And really want to thank the communication specialists, dispatchers, all the hardworking people on our emergency communications, who are there every single day, every hour, to respond to our residents in the times of greatest need. And they are a lifeline certainly for our community. Any comments or motion? Motion from Councilmember Peralos, and her second, Councilmember Jimenez. Next up is 2.10. That's Council Policy Priority 13 Cannabis Equity and the State California Equity Art Grant Funding. Councilmember Carrasco.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor. Just, I guess, a couple of comments and a question. I don't know if this would be addressed to you, Dave, or just your team here? Anyone that I can?
See Michelle and Kim waving their hands.
Yep, we have staff in the audience.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Well, again, I'm very supportive of this, and thank you so much for going through the process. I know that it wasn't quite what we had asked for, but it's a good start. And I think that this leveraged well, will go a long way in terms of supporting our community and the efforts that we've outlined. I guess the other question I have is, or a question that I have, my understanding is that the state of California has opened up another process for funding or will be doing And I just wanted to get some feedback from you in terms of what our next steps should be, so that we can see if they're willing to give us the gap that we have now.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Carrasco. Yes, I actually spoke via email with the Governor's Office on Business and Economic Development this afternoon because the grant, the solicitation did not come out yesterday, which was the day it was expected. So sometime within the next week or two, is what they're saying. We provided some very detailed feedback to them, as did a number of other jurisdictions. And they are taking all of that into account before they release the final grant solicitation. And they will extend the grant deadline into March. So we are preparing. We have a team member who's working on our cannabis equity assessment right now. And hopefully, we will have that done in time so we can be in the right category. But we're still not sure what the final solicitation will look like. We reviewed the draft in detail, and it looks like we might have an opportunity to get some additional funding.
And even though we haven't spent the current grant money, will we still be eligible to apply?
Yes. In fact, GoBiz actually called me directly to ensure that we would provide feedback on the grant, the draft grant solicitation, and talk to us about our program and where we were at. And it's really two different pots of money from the state budget. And so, it's an entirely new grant process with this other pot of money.
Okay. And I guess the final question, when will the funds be dispersed?
So the funds for what you're voting on today will be dispersed as soon as we can execute a grant agreement with the resolution that you're adopting. So sometime within, you know, it depends on how quickly the state moves, but we would get that paperwork to them very quickly.
Thank you. And so, and thank you for also working with our cannabis community, those who have been part of the equity vision for the city of San Jose. I know that you'll probably continue to, I anticipate that you'll continue to work with them hand in hand until this funding comes through, regardless of when that funding materializes.
Yeah, we are actually transitioning the program over to economic development as part of their work with small business out of the policy team, but I will still be a technical advisor to them on the project, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. And with that, I move approval of item 2.10. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, Michelle, for your work and the work of your small but mighty team in securing more than half a million dollar grant. And that's great. And I want to thank Councilmember Carrasco and all the council members who pushed and prodded to enable us to take advantage of this opportunity. Any other comments? Let's vote. Okay, even though we're voting on 2.10, what you saw on the screen was 2.8. That was 2.10, just to make sure everyone's clear on that. Okay. We are then moving on. I believe those are all the items on consent. On to the report of our city manager.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. No report today.
All right, 3.5, our actions related to the purchase order of Folsom Lake Ford for the purchase of Ford police interceptor sport utility vehicles. I just had one question on this. I'm not sure if anybody from Public Works...
(Inaudible)
Oh, John's jumping down as a volunteer from Department of Transportation? No. Okay. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. Dave Mesa, acting fleet manager for Public Works Fleet Management Division.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate you responding to our inquiry just about the various options here. As I understand it, we're not there yet in terms of electric car technology to enable for the use of police vehicles? Is that right?
Correct. There currently is no technology that's basically standardized as pursuit rated at this time.
Yeah. And I understand, is the primary concern about the power, that is, if the cars need to be able to push other vehicles? Is that the issue?
No, there's actually several factors that make a vehicle...
I'm sorry, if you could just step a little closer to that.
There's actually several factors that make a vehicle pursuit rated. I actually have Mario Razzo here, who's our equipment specialist, and he can kind of detail those factors.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mario.
Yeah, so Fleet looks for pursuit-rated vehicles for the police department. It's a number of items that will classify a vehicle as pursuit-rated. We're talking heavy-duty systems that are on the vehicles, such as charging systems, brake systems, suspension systems. It's configuration of the cab where the transmission shifter is located to accommodate additional equipment that's within the police vehicle. And also the ability to support onboard communication systems that the police vehicles require. There's MDCs, which are mobile data computers that are on the vehicles. And usually those, the pursuit-rated vehicles are ramped up as far as like reserve capacity to support those systems. So technology is not quite there yet for an all-electric police vehicle, from what we've been collecting from the different manufacturers. Being that Ford is introducing a hybrid model, that is a big step in the police world as far as, excuse me, vehicles go. And it's going to really put a breakthrough as far as fuel savings goes. They're averaging right now about 1,200 gallons of fuel saved per vehicle, is what Ford's reporting out. So, and there's more data coming in.
Great. Well, thank you for that. I appreciate. We can't move any faster than the technology, so thanks for your efforts. Also, thanks for giving us the information about the cost. So I understand it ranges, whether it's gas, it's about $36,000 to $44,000 a vehicle, it's hybrid. So just to understand, what we're buying here, would this be roughly 50 vehicles?
Roughly about 40 to 42.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Oh, yes, sir.
I just had one other comment. We don't, once we have a solution for all-electric vehicles, the one thing that's still missing that we don't have is the infrastructure on-site, obviously, at the police department to be able to support those.
The fast chargers?
Chargers of any nature at this point at that location.
Okay.
And you would have to have roughly 302 chargers installed to support the police department's marked fleet.
By that, you mean there are 302 that are deployed at any time?
There's 302 vehicles on the campus, so you'd have to either devise a rotational charging structure, infrastructure, or have the infrastructure in place to charge all the vehicles.
Got it. Yeah, okay. So maybe with some super fast chargers, we could move them around the city. Okay, well, thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, there was a motion on this, I believe. If that passes unanimously, thanks, gentlemen. On to 5.1, which is the public hearing for the air service support program. There is no presentation here. Just want to thank John Aiken and Judy for their response to our questions, questions I was bothering with them over the weekend. I don't have any cards, so let's vote. And thanks to them for, and their teams for continuing to drive extraordinary growth at the airport. I think we were up 9% of passengers last year. Extraordinary. 5.2 is the Deirdre Don Integrated Station Concept Plan. Hi, John. Hi, Jim.
Good afternoon. John Risto, Director of Transportation, and Jim Whortball, Deputy City Manager. Just wanted, there is no presentation, but just want to briefly recap. On the 28th of January, we conducted a study session for the council to consider information on decision number three for the Deirdre Don Integrated Station Concept Plan. We prepared a supplemental memo for today, and we also did receive the blue memo from council members Mayor Licardo, council members Jimenez, Peralas, Davis, and Asparza, and staff... staff reports the recommendations contained therein. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to move the memo from you, Jimenez, Peralas, myself, and Esparza. And I just want to say, do we not have any cards?
I'm puzzled myself. Do we not have any cards? Okay.
Okay. I think this is kind of what we wanted. We wanted the decision to be anticlimactic and for all of our residents to know that we had kicked all of the tires on all of the different possible alignments, which is what we did. A reporter asked me yesterday if I felt resigned to this decision, and while I couldn't get exactly there, I do have to say both this alignment and the viaduct alignment would have impacts to our community, will have impacts to our community, and I think this is the best option that we could have. And that, knowing that we will have impacts, is why we put into our memo the need to have an ongoing neighborhood committee to give, to provide feedback about what those impacts are over time, and to make sure that this project has not just mitigations but betterments to ensure that the neighbors are as minimally impacted as possible as we have, as we grow the train service, and as we basically continue to serve the entire Bay Area through rail. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralas.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm a little surprised too, and maybe it's, I don't know, it's the speed of the agenda, or if it's because we heard it a number of times. And so I have a couple comments and then questions, but I am chewing on the idea of maybe potentially, you know, hearing the next two items and then coming back to this to give at least a little bit more time if anybody wanted to show up. I kind of hate for the last thing to be, that somebody showed up and just at least didn't get their last word. And I'm not personally aware of anybody that was saying they were coming out, but I do know there was media that was interested in it and had been interviewing some people that had stated that they were going to come. So that, you know, if that's something that we're willing to do, I'd be willing to say maybe table this. There's only a couple more items, so.
Yeah, I'm fine. We can get through some other items if it's okay with staff to hang around a little bit until we hear from that.
Okay.
Those members of the committee want to speak?
Okay, so do we need a motion for that, I guess?
I don't think we do. Well, we're gonna do it later. Yeah, okay, so we'll just take this out of order, and we'll move on then. Thanks, John. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Sorry, guys.
Okay. On to 7.1, which is council priority number, no, I'm sorry, 8.1 is where we're going based on the motion that rules the day. 8.1 are actions related to Fourth and Reed Street surplus designation and purchase option for Habitat for Humanity. Hi, Nancy.
Nancy Klein, Office of Economic Development. We have a brief presentation to show you. There is the site on Fourth and Reed. It's roughly 10,400 square feet, and the proposal is to sell Habitat, half of that for a dollar, to be the receiver site for the Paulson apartment building, and that the Paulson, as you know, would be moved to accommodate the development of the Garden Gate project. State law allows the city to sell surplus land directly to a nonprofit housing corporation. Habitat, again, would be the partner. Habitat has agreed to limit all four potential units for sale at prices affordable to those at 60% AMI. The why of this is that we would be creating an affordable housing ownership opportunity for those four folks, and we would also preserve the Paulson apartments, the 1910 Mission Revival-style building, and we would be strengthening the overall neighborhood. The how is the initial move costs for moving the Paulson to this location range, and it's early days, so we have initial estimates, somewhere between $70,000 and $220,000, and that the initial estimates for foundations for the new location range between $150,000 and $200,000 square feet. KT Urban has committed to pay for moving costs, and Habitat commits to renovate the structure. So the next step, if council approves, will be to finalize the option agreement, and then to work, Habitat will work with KT Urban to finalize costs and see what can be covered and how Habitat would fund the overall project. And with that, staff is available for any questions, and I believe Rob is, from Habitat, is in the audience.
Great, thank you. All right. Just want to see if we had any cards from the public on this item. It appears not, in case. I know we have some questions in the council idea as well. Councilmember Carrasco? Is that on the, prior item?
No, that was for...
Okay.
Prior item, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Carrasco, did you have comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So, thank you, Nancy, and I want to thank Kim as well, and thank the members of the Preservation Act and council who came out to show their support for this as well, and for their contribution of $10,000 to Habitat for Humanity as a small, local nonprofit dedicated to preserving our history. Making that contribution to be able to support this effort is really a great effort on your part. And again, thank you for joining us in celebrating that before the council meeting kicked off today. And I want to thank KT Urban as well for their partnership on this. We went back and forth for a little bit in trying to be able to come to a good conclusion, and I'm really glad that we have found a location and found a partner and have a willing developer that's going to be covering the move. So I appreciate this, and I will move staff recommendation.
I want to thank everyone for their hard work on this, and also thank KT Properties for their commitment of what would be hundreds of thousands of dollars to move this building. I hate to be a stick in the mud, but I just wanted to ask some questions because I'm concerned about some gaps and also perhaps maybe the opportunity cost. And by that, I mean the opportunity perhaps to build a higher-density affordable housing project if this were combined with other parcels and so forth. So I really appreciate the information you provided over the weekend, Nancy. My understanding, based on that information, is that Mark is committed to spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for the move, and Habitat will handle renovation. There is a gap, and that is for the foundation, which could run between $150,000 and $200,000. Is that right?
As far as we know, yes.
Is Habitat committed to fundraise for that, or?
In speaking with Rob Simons, yes, they're looking for the possibility of, one, continuing the conversation with Mr. Trascini to see if there are any other funds, so I just want to be clear about that. But Rob also understands the potential for needing to cover that from financing sources. He's already committed to the rehabilitation of the home prior to sale. So in these early days, he would, of course, be looking to secure financing before moving much further. We can finalize the option agreement, we're very close, so that would give him the opportunity. The option agreement is for 18 months. So we have room to try to make this work.
Okay. And you mentioned Rob is here. Rob, would you have a moment to speak? Thank you. Thank you for attending, and welcome, and thanks for all the work that Habitat does. I'm just curious about this issue about us having to sell the land. I'm becoming just kind of increasingly aware of the perils of our loss of ability to have land that we know we might need, particularly in strategic locations like this one, which is near a freeway. You can imagine transportation needs change by the decades, and at some point, the city may need the land for one thing or another. And I know that it's very common in places like Hawaii where people have leaseholds that last 50 years or 99 years, which is essentially ownership of the property. They get all the benefits of it, but the underlying land may still be held in fee by, say, the city. And I'm just wondering, is there anything like that model that Habitat has worked with in the past? Because I know you are trying to encourage ownership, but would there be a mechanism for us to be able to engage in a, you know, dollar-a-decade lease relationship so the city could still retain title for some point in the future?
There are ways in which we could structure a transaction in which there would be a long-term ground lease. They're typically done, yeah, 75, 80, 90, 99 years. I think quite a bit of Foster City has actually done on ground lease situations like that. The only real issue at the end of the day, other than it adds layers and layers of paperwork with the homeowners that will ultimately purchase one of the condos that we develop on the property, would be that at some point in time out at the end of that ground lease situation, the property value, the value of the homes tends to decrease when there's only five or 10 years left on the underlying ground lease. The uncertainty of what's going to happen moving forward once that ground lease expires causes the value of the homes to drop dramatically.
Yeah, fair point. So there would need to be a negotiated agreement with the county, with the city to continue the lease, or else decision to take back the property.
Yes, that'd be correct.
Okay. And you're comfortable taking this on, knowing you still have a fairly big nut to crack with regard to the foundation?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of things that need to be negotiated still out here. I mean, we've been working hypothetically, we've done some work with a civil engineer to determine that it looks like the building can be situated on this piece of property, but nothing is definitive yet until we get some, you know, quite a few more studies done, work through setback issues, things like that, and meet the requirements of the city to relocate the building to this property. But we're comfortable that we can do that. There's just going to be costs associated with it that we need to fund.
Understood. Thank you. And then Nancy, just a question about, you know, it seems that there's underdeveloped parcels immediately adjacent, and I know typically, you know, Jackie, or back in the old redevelopment days, we'd look at those opportunities as opportunities to aggregate parcels, and they would build a larger development, maybe it would house a lot more people, et cetera. Is that something we explored at all here?
Absolutely. And we are still talking to an adjacent property owner who may, in the long run, after working with housing and potentially on Ellis issues because of the types of homes that are already in the area, who may be interested in purchasing the other 5,000 roughly square feet. And that's a potential. There isn't anything near term that has been recently discussed from that suitor to us. And just to make clear, because it would be going to a private entity, we would need to go through the surplus process, but it's highly unlikely that another entity other than the adjacent property owner would seek to purchase it because it will be landlocked.
Right. Okay, and you're referring to the property that runs parallel to 280, the portion of that property? Okay. Well, thank you for that. I'm happy to support this. I just ask if the maker of the motion might consider a friendly amendment to encourage staff to explore a long-term lease for a dollar a centry or whatever it might be, essentially a no-cost lease that would enable the city to have the land at some point in the future.
I guess I'm comfortable either way, which I think so I was comfortable with it because I felt the original staff recommendation of the actual sell of the property, because I don't think actually there's great opportunity for any near-term or even long-term redevelopment of the property there. Or even, you know, that this idea of a partnership of one of the neighboring property owners purchasing and buying the land, given just the area of where it's in and the odd shape of where this is at, I see the benefit in, you know, the city retaining some sort of ownership, but I think we've also, you know, made some decisions to sell off some other parcels of land that maybe we could have made the same argument, that maybe even had better location for development, but we didn't. And so I don't see a strong reason to go that route. I guess I kind of want to be convinced on what you feel, right? It's sounds like, sure, you mentioned a lot of paperwork, it's possible. If there's no heartache on Habitat for Humanity's end, and you say, look, we can totally roll with a 99-year lease, and we think that that's completely feasible, and the, you know, we think we've worked through the issues with the future homeowners, great, then I'm willing to accept the friendly amendment. But if you say, no, actually, it's much better and easier, and we feel it's better for us and the future tenants to just go with what the staff recommendation is today, then I'm fine not amending it. So I guess I'm looking for a more definitive answer on your part.
It's much cleaner to provide fee simple title to the property for each one of the future property owners. That being said, as I said before, it is done on long-term ground leases everywhere. It just adds layers of paperwork to what we need to get the future homeowners to agree with and make sure that they understand very clearly that they will not own this property into perpetuity. So it is doable. We have done it, I believe, one other time in the past.
And you don't think that it's going to throw any other wrench, or as the mayor put it, a stick in the mud in regards to the, what you have to now go through still with, obviously, the other cost in addition to moving this and the foundation and other issues? You don't think this is going to bring any other issues in that regard?
I don't foresee that, no.
Okay. Then I'm comfortable with the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Is that all right with the senator? Yes, okay, all right. Again, thanks to Habitat for all their work with the city, particularly on what we're working on right now over on 101 in Mayberry. Appreciate all that you guys do. All right, any other comments on this item? Let's vote. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Mike Sodergun did submit a card. Mike, come on down.
One is the preservationist, and they say, boy, we really need to save this Paulson apartment building because it tells a great story about San Jose. And we didn't talk about it in the press release today, but it's amazing stories that we're going to reveal in the next weeks here. Imagine the developer who needs to really clear his property so that he can build a lot of new housing, right? Imagine a city that is trying to reconcile a bunch of seemingly incompatible goals of providing housing, preserving the place to be a nice place to live, preserving, you know, historic places. And imagine a housing nonprofit that wants to build houses in the most expensive place in the planet, to build houses that we could call affordable. Well, that just happened, right? From our perspective, we are so proud of our city department that has dealt with this issue, and we just could not speak more in favor of this particular resolution. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you, councilperson Peralas.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now let's vote. And we're going to return now to 7.1. That passes unanimously. 7.1 is the council policy priority number 25, private property graffiti abatement ordinance. Welcome, Olympia. No, we've got a presentation on this one. John?
Sorry about that.
Got a very eager council. I think you've got strong support already.
All right, awesome.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. So John Cisarali, Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services, to my left, Neil Rafino, Assistant Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services, and to his left, Olympia Williams, Program Manager, who has oversight of anti-graffiti, among other things. So we're going to run through a quick presentation. This is council priority number 25. I believe we've finally come to a conclusion and a recommendation that helps close this item out and improve the process, so we'll explain that to you briefly, and then available for any questions or comments you have.
Great, thanks, John. Neil Rafino, again, Assistant Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services. As you know, Olympia, here she oversees the anti-graffiti program as part of our department's overall beautify SJ program. Anti-graffiti's purpose is to remove graffiti through community involvement, eradication, and enforcement. I would also like to thank Peter Hamilton from the city manager's office for all his research and support inside of this project. Our anti-graffiti program through our contractors, GPC, eradicates over... Our anti-graffiti program through our contractors, GPC, eradicates over 2 million square feet of graffiti each year. Our overall goal is to remove graffiti within 72 hours and work closely with our jurisdictional partners like Caltrans and PG&E to remove graffiti on their property as quickly as possible. This presentation is going to focus on our strategy to better coordinate removal of graffiti on private property. All right. In October 2017, Councilmember McCamus brought forward and established Council Priority Number 25, which asked the administration to explore an ordinance that will allow staff to warn private property owners to abate graffiti on their property within 72 hours or the city will abate the graffiti and bill the property owner. With that in front of us, staff began researching this effort to identify the best manner in which we could achieve the ultimate goal, which is to remove graffiti from private property as quickly as we can. Again, with our overall goal to reduce the visual blight within our city. Summary abatement of graffiti, right, is the process under which a jurisdiction abates graffiti on private property without consent of the property owner and without going to court to obtain a warrant. The ordinance that we researched in the city of South Lake Tahoe uses and establishes a summary abatement process. Our research with South Lake Tahoe was that the summary abatement was rarely enforced and their process of fines and notifications were sufficient to motivate compliance. Prior to this effort in 2013, through the anti-graffiti program audit, the auditor also recommended us that the city develop an implied consent process allowing the city to remove graffiti. After review of this recommendation with the city attorney's office, this recommendation was closed without implementation due to concerns over private property rights. In recent years, the city has only used a summary abatement without the user's consent, again, once in the past five years, in terms to allow to us to remove threatening gang graffiti. As such, staff does not recommend expanding the use of summary abatements as a regular course of action. And as stated earlier, PRNS does recommend a process improvement that we will believe will get to the ultimate goal of removing graffiti on private property much more quickly.
Olympia Williams, Beautify SJ Program Manager. So to give you an idea of the amount of graffiti that we deal with on private property, this chart kind of shows what we received from 2016, '17 through 2018, '19. You notice that we did continue to receive increased complaints about graffiti on private property, essentially going from a little over 1,700 to nearly 2,400 over the last three years. We make site visits each time we receive a complaint on private property. We initially had over 1,600. We're down to about a little over 1,100. That's because most of the property that's private property that's graffiti are kind of repeat property. So we tend to have them in our database. We can go to a phone list, call them, discuss it with them, and work with them to get it removed. We sent out about 315 compliance letters last year, and with those compliance letters, there were only 13 referrals that we made over to code enforcement that came from the anti-graffiti program. I want to note, however, that residents oftentimes will report graffiti directly to code enforcement. These are just the number of complaints that come through the anti-graffiti program. We have approximately 200,000 square feet of graffiti that we removed off of private property that we coordinated the removal of internally or with the property owner last year. To give you an idea, we abated 2.4 million square feet of graffiti in fiscal year 1819. This chart here kind of walks you through what our current process is. So the anti-graffiti program, which is on the left in the lime green, we receive a complaint. A PRNS staff member typically goes out to review that complaint, look at the location, and determine whether it's truly on public property or private property. If it's on private property, then we work with them so that we can make that site visit. We attempt to make contact with the property owner and offer either a courtesy abatement or free paint. Then if the property owner provides consent for a courtesy abatement, we usually send them a, if they don't provide that consent for a courtesy abatement, staff will send them a compliance letter giving them 10 days to remove it. At that point, we close out that work order request. If there is another complaint that comes in within that 10 days, you'll see that arrow kind of take you all the way to the top and then it goes over to the code enforcement. At that point, code enforcement starts another process. They receive the complaint about graffiti on private property. Code then will perform a site inspection. If a violation is fined, they send a warning notice to the property owner, giving them within 10 to 14 days to abate it. Code staff then re-inspects the site to determine if it's been brought into compliance. If the site is not in compliance, then a citation that includes a $250 fine is sent. Code staff then will re-inspect the site again, and if they have not complied, then they kind of move into this escalating fines of $500 and $1,000. If fines are not sufficient to motivate compliance, then code will then go to an appeals hearing board or other kinds of things such as a city warrant. What we have found, though, is that code has not been able to find an instance where they've had to utilize this and usually fines is enough to motivate people to remove graffiti. So our recommendation to kind of really deal with graffiti on private property is to have staff re-inspect sites where there is a second complaint and forward the complaint to the code enforcement division, thereby shortening the abatement process. So essentially what we do is say, "We've re-inspected the site," and instead of going all the way to the top and starting that code enforcement process again, we basically, now I believe that's a blue line, kind of, we've re-inspected the site, we'd send over an affidavit with the photograph and the information regarding the graffiti on private property, and we essentially at that point go back to fine. We go directly to fine. Staff proposes this streamlined process because it allows us to re-inspect those sites and then address that issue at that time. We do not, at this point, recommend that we use other options to deal with this particular issue. But there are two other options that we can consider besides a process improvement. Just one more. There you are. So other policy options could include kind of a anti-graffiti program staff would re-inspect sites where a compliance letter is sent. As you recall from the slide, a couple slides before, there were about 315 sites in 1819 that we had to send a compliance letter. Performing re-inspections of all sites where a compliance letter is sent would relieve the public of the need to file a second complaint before a case is referred to code enforcement. This would require more staff and resources to do. This is not an option that we would recommend. The second option is really be able to look kind of at our business tax registration process. Although modifications to the business tax registration process could be explored, it is not recommended as the registration process is only completed once, when a business commences operation in the city of San Jose, and it would not capture existing business bases that are currently registered with the city. This alternative would also exclude residential property and other non-business property from the process as they may not be required to even register for the business tax. This change would also likely result in a change order to the current online business tax registration form and result in a less desirable customer experience when completing the application. That concludes our presentation and we are available for questions.
Thank you very much, Olympia. Thanks for all your work and thanks and congratulations, Neil, on your new gig. All right, back to council. Councilmember McCamus.
Yes, I also want to thank staff for working on this and taking this very seriously. It's a, it was a much bigger problem than one would think because some, it was taking so, so, so long to get people or private places to get the graffiti cleaned up. And in some cases, you know, it was neighbors reporting on the neighbors, then complaining to our offices and what have you. So I appreciate the refining and streamlining and, you know, cutting the five steps there. And I appreciate the discussion that, John, you had in my office and, Neil, thank you for doing that. I just, is there also any, you know, I don't want to give you more things to do, but is there any way for those people that who are repeat customers of the graffiti program, is there, is there a way to streamline their requests too so that they don't have to go through that whole, you know, even the shortcut? Can they just call you and say, "Hey, we need it and we'll, we need this cleaned up and we'll pay for it?"
So at this time, we don't have a process where business owners can come directly to us and pay the city to remove graffiti. What we have found is that those repeat customers, we tend to give them custom match paints to their building as well as the paint supplies, and they tend to take it down on a regular basis. So they just tend to be in areas where they have a blank wall that's just a canvas and they're in an area where it just attracts a lot of tagging.
Yeah. Well, you know, that was the other purpose that I had along with that is just to, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to necessarily incur the cost for the city for these private businesses or residences, but I want to give them the opportunity to use our service because it's faster, they match the paint, and it, and quite frankly, I have to tell you, most of these people that use your services are very, very happy with, with the results, especially in the paint matching area as well. So I'll make a motion to accept your recommendation and not go further on the, on the billing system and what have you, but I would like us to, to find a way for having those people who want the services to come out on a regular basis to streamline that process so that they don't have to go through even the refined way. Maybe we can, you know, my whole purpose was to have them opt-in, and I still want an opt-in situation. And I, and I know that my original suggestion wasn't feasible because of all the laws of trespassing or whatever, what have you, is what we discussed. But I would love to have a way where we could figure this out for the frequent flyers, if you will.
So.
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. That's definitely something we can explore and it's, you know, I'm sure we can just figure out, well, you know, you're going to reimburse the city, but you'll have this ability to come to us directly versus trying to do it yourself or waiting for someone to complain about you and us to call you again and things like that.
Right. I just don't want people to be complaining about, I don't want, I don't want to have us to wait till people start complaining about each other in order to fix this problem. That's where I'm getting at.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you again, all of you, for your work, and I did make the motion, so if I can get a second, that'd be great.
You got a few seconds, so it's good. All right. Other questions? Oh, Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to one of the options. Where I have an issue is when we have to close out the complaints and the length of time between the initial complaint and the second complaint, which could be, you know, obviously longer than 10 days, but could be much longer. What's the, when you thought about that recommendation of bringing on additional staff, kind of what was the cost-benefit analysis that you did in terms of not making that part of your recommendation?
Well, we don't have a great way, first of all. This is a gap in the program. We don't have a great way of determining whether or not, in situations where someone doesn't call a second time, did the graffiti come down or not? So we do rely on that second complaint, but because of that, as you can see, there's a large amount that we don't get a second complaint on, so there's some uncertainty there. We just don't have the bandwidth to go out to all those places, so that was really the cost analysis was if, if the city council wants us to go back and re-inspect when we don't hear back after 10 days, we don't have a contact, we don't know for sure if it got taken down, you know, it's 300 or 400 a year on average, it's just going to take somebody time and effort to go out and find out what's going on. So we didn't recommend it because it's an additional cost and overall, we feel the system is fairly efficient. Most private property owners are willing to work with us, as Councilmember McCamus pointed out. They're pretty happy with our services when we show up. Usually when we can make contact with them, it goes pretty smooth. It's when we can't make contact with them, that's when things get dragged out because we're trying to find a property or we're trying to figure out a way to get on there or hold someone accountable, and that takes a bunch of time. But most people don't want the graffiti up there. Most people are compliant, but as you know, there are some that aren't and they stop caring about, because they're just getting hit over and over and over again. And so those tend to be the difficult ones, and those we tend to establish relationships with because we're out there so much with them. You know, we know who the owner is by then, we know who the operators are by then. So we just didn't propose it in this because there was an additional cost to it and it's sort of the lower hanging fruit in terms of volume. You know, it's not a huge volume, but it does leave a gap.
So you, like rough estimates, maybe it would require hiring additional staffing for maybe like a 5% or 7% of the properties that don't get abated on their own?
Yeah, it's a volume issue. I mean, what we think it would take is just one extra person to be able to go out and re-inspect and/or if they make contact, then do the paint or give them paint. You know, the same program is basically just making a second touch in person. It's just the time and effort to do that, we think, would take another FTE.
Okay. And then the next question is, just in terms of paint, if we have properties that get tagged over and over and over again, aren't there, isn't there paint now that you can just, you know, power wash off or avoid having the initial tagging to begin with as opposed to constantly paint over the same property with the same type of paint?
Are you saying, is there like an application you can put on the wall that makes it less likely to, for graffiti to stick to it?
Yeah, or that you can power wash it off.
Yeah, there are. It adds an expense. You know, right now, for us to just come out and paint it, it's actually quite cheap. And that's why it's such a great bargain. I think so many people like it because they don't have to do labor, they don't have to do anything other than pay us a little bit of money. But to put another, a surface on there, which is possible, and then as you, as more graffiti gets on there and you're cleaning it, that does wear off and you have to reapply it. So it's an extra expense is the issue. I don't know that, Olympia, do we offer that, yeah, we don't offer it as a service at this point. One of the things we are contemplating, because we are expecting more graffiti once the BART line opens, all the people that are in the know about this tell this, this will come and we'll see more tagging. So we have been trying to build the budget a little more to be ready for that, but we've also been looking at the concept of creating maybe some kind of a grant or assistance program for those property owners who are, they do seem to just have the bad luck of being in a great location for graffiti. You're on a nice corner in a neighborhood where there's a lot of graffiti and you just get hit over and over and over again, and it seems like a never-ending task to keep your walls clear of graffiti, that we might come up with a program that can help them with putting up a mural or planting vines up the wall or something that discourages graffiti or could do, as you're suggesting, maybe it's an application that makes it harder for the graffiti to stick. So we haven't quite fleshed that out, but we do recognize that there's at least, it's not a huge number, but there's a small number of folks. We know them, you know, because we're out there with them all the time and we sympathize, you know, that they just have this bad luck because of their location. And so we do want to try to figure out ways that life can be easier for them as well.
Well, I would just, I won't make this a friendly amendment, but I would just strongly encourage you to do that kind of cost-benefit analysis and look at alternatives to just doing the same thing we're doing over and over again, particularly on those properties that constantly get hit. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Sparta.
Thank you. First off, thank you for your work on this process and thank you for your work every day. You all do, the whole team does a lot of work throughout the city and especially in District 7, and it's much appreciated. I had just one question, which is, I mean, I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to ask it, about Union Pacific, particularly on some blighted properties or tagged properties where ownership isn't totally clear. How does this process impact that?
So in November, December, and early January, we had the mega Union Pacific Railroad cleanup. They reported to me that they abated approximately, I think it was 321,000 and change square feet of graffiti outside of just the Monterey Quarter that we're doing as a project in District 2. What they've committed to is continuing to maintain those walls and areas. It's unique in that oftentimes businesses, the back of a business may be directly aligned to the railroad, but they don't have access to go along the railroad to paint it out. So the railroad has committed that once a year that they will address the graffiti, and they're looking at doing that every November.
Okay, and if it's needed sooner, then we can go back to them and negotiate.
We could definitely go back and ask that they address it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Karaska.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the same thing, the same gratitude. I'm very grateful for, for the work that you're doing. District 5, of course, is not a stranger to all of you in terms of your workload, and so I really appreciate when you're out there and you're keeping our neighborhood as clean as possible, and I know that that's a tough. as possible, and I know that that's a tough order. And I'm thinking, you know, as I'm looking at this policy, I'm thinking of just some of the empty buildings that we have up along Alum Rock corridor, which has been a repeated concern for us, and so I appreciate what this will do for the whole city, but I really appreciate what this will do for District 5. Just out of curiosity, the repeat offenders, are those accessible to us? Can we send them something out of our office? Can we connect with them somehow? I know that we know some of them, we don't know all of them, but this would be for those who are a little bit more problematic than the typical wall or window that we see etched out.
I imagine that's public record. The, when you say repeat offenders, you're meaning properties that are getting continually hit?
Yeah.
Or aren't taking it down, kind of a thing, yeah. I mean...
Something that we could, somehow we could outreach and let them know what the policy is now. Is there any way that you could provide that for us?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we have a frequent flyer list of the ones that just, it's constant, you take it down, it doesn't take almost any time for more to come up.
Yeah, and just be able to maybe offer some other recommendations in terms of what they can do, but also I'm concerned about those who just leave it up, and it takes them a while. So I know that this will resolve some of that, but for us to be able to also just connect with them. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one. Given how labor-intensive some of this work is of getting out there just to visually inspect and to verify a complaint, have we considered or explored using drones to enable us to be able to get to more homes, just to do that very simple task? Obviously, I know there are other things we would not rely on drones for, but with a very tightly conscripted set of guidelines about how they would get used, you know, something with a camera that could just take the photo, verify, and then shoot that image back to City Hall. Is that something we've explored at all?
No, we haven't explored that. It's an interesting concept. I know there's some FAA issues with flying drones around the city.
Yeah.
So you have to get permits and permission and things like, because we've tried to do this at some events, and it's a process to be able to have a drone up in the air. It's not impossible, though, because we've been able to do it at some of our events and get some great aerial shots, so it's certainly something we can talk with the airport about and see, you know, could, because obviously there's these other business models out there like Amazon, going to fly drones all over the place, so somebody's got to be figuring out how you can fly drones around. That said, we don't have the expertise to fly drones around either.
Understood.
So we'd have to rely on someone else to do it for us.
Somebody that does pit stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, John, also, I think that the drone issue is on the civic innovation roadmap, so I know we are looking at how we can operationalize that, but as you mentioned, as John mentioned, there's a lot of issues we're working through, but I certainly think the utilization of drones and things like inspection is in our future. It's just working through the policy issues and the privacy issues and all those sorts of things.
Yeah, that's good to know, thanks.
Yeah, I think that one of our unleash your geek challenges is the use of drones for fire to aid in some rescue situations, so maybe we'll learn some things through that as well. All right, thank you for fielding my bizarre question. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote. We are now at the time for the interview for the public member appointment to the board if gentleman is here now. If not, we can proceed with the remaining item. He's on his way? Does that mean he's coming in from the...
He's coming in.
In 15. Okay, why don't we go forward then with the Deeredon Integrated Station Concept Plan item, which is 5.2, so we'll recall that. And then Councilmember Prowl, you have the floor.
Yes, and we didn't get any public speakers.
We do now, yes. We have Roland LeBrun's, his card.
Maybe we'll hear Roland first and then I'll carry on.
Okay. Roland, come on down. If anyone else would like to speak, just fill out a yellow card and drop it there in the box, and we'll call you on up.
Thank you, and apologies for being late earlier. I was at the mercy of the VTA guts fighting with the homeless bicycles. So very briefly, this viaduct is what brought me out of retirement 10 years ago, and at the time, I was looking at the Creek Beach Trail, and my friend, Richard Zapelli, was driving me around, introducing me to Willow Glen. I didn't know Willow Glen. And we were driving east on Alma, and at one point to Estamian, at one point, Richard said, "This is where the high-speed rail viaduct is going to be coming down." And I went, "Why did you just say, Richard?" And the rest is history. But the reason I made the trip today, well, first of all, when you hear the item, I hope you will all vote on this unanimously, and you can see they know the members of the public here, but I want you to revisit the tunnel, because the assumptions on which you discounted the tunnel alignment were false. They were provided to the city by the same people who were pushing the viaduct, which, by the way, are no longer on the project, and they were designed to make it impossible to have any underground platforms and derision. So moving forward, I hope you'll give us the opportunity to sit down with you and show you what can be done, how easily it can be constructed, and what you can build on top of it, and you will also the benefits in terms of connectivity to the airport, and now we can, how we can also use the same infrastructure to basically limit the impacts of all this new traffic that's going to be going to Willow Glen and Gardner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak on this item?
I did.
Yeah, come on up, and then you can hand the card off on your way back. Thank you.
Well, today's been very interesting. Before I talk about Deeredon, I'd just like to say, Mr. Licardo, that I've lived in San Jose 30 years, North Willow Glen. It's going to be part of what is known as this new Google Village, which is, I'm not too sure what that's actually going to look like, but that's right where I'm at. There is, and this is what I've been trying, what I've been thinking about speaking to you directly about, is if you are at Ozeray and Byrd, Byrd leaves right to the San Jose Shark Tank, there is an off-ramp coming from the north off 280 to Byrd, there is an off-ramp coming from 280 south. They both come like that, and they dump on Byrd Avenue. And at the corner of Byrd and Ozeray is the most blighted little 15,000-square-foot, maybe more, area that has been like that since I've lived here over 30 years. It has never improved. It has, it used to be just, well, you can imagine, I mean, just garbage, homeless, concrete, just awful, and it's never improved. And now that we have this Google Village, and now that we have the Shark Tank, and it's such a major off-ramp and on-ramp from 280, it would be so nice if possibly you could leave that as a, as part of your legacy, to clean that up with a nice little plaza fountain, to show people coming from 280 off and on from all over the world to the new Google Village, that this is really what San Jose looks like. This is a horrible blight, and it's been like that for a long time, the corner of 280, the corner of Ozeray and Byrd. Okay. But about this train station expansion, I live on...
I'm sorry, you'll have to get it in in a sentence, because I think your time is actually up, but you could just summarize your views.
Well, I only found out about it today.
Okay.
And I live right across the street from it. And over the years, we went through an expansion. It was one, it expanded, they built a berm, came out 15 feet, and built another, added another track. Since then, they have electrified it. All of this has been ongoing construction, and, I mean, can you imagine what it's been like for us to live there? And now that we hear, and today I only heard from CBS News, who was down there interviewing, that you're going, that there's an intention to expand that by two tracks. This means that you're going to have to rebuild those trussels. They're not, they're, they only take two tracks. That, that's an amazing, that's going to be, one is not too big.
Sure, I'm sorry.
The other one goes across Byrd Avenue, and it's going to be an amazing piece of construction. But to add that without my ever having been notified, and no one on my block having ever been notified about this expansion, also, it's so, just, I don't know how to say it, it just, to me, it's a very visceral assault on my neighborhood that just makes me want to scream. But I realize, you know, the train is, it's business, and maybe you think it's better for the, our neighborhood and the community to expand this, these two, this railway into Deeredon Station, but it's going to be an incredibly disruptive situation for us for a number of years, and we've all...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. It's okay, it's all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Before we go, Councilmember Prowl, staff, could you just describe the outreach effort that we have been made, making over the last, I don't know, couple of years, to try to notify folks in the neighborhood?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great question. So for this Deeredon Integrated Station Concept Plan specifically, that goes back roughly a year and a half, so I'm not going to speak to the high-speed rail project, Caltrain project over the years, but just this, this last 18 months, we've had more than, more than five community meetings, including a workshop, multiple languages for all of those, presentations to the stationary advisory group, pop-up booths at Deeredon Station, as well as at community groups, online survey, online town hall, and we've gone wherever we could in terms of stakeholder and neighborhood groups. For the workshop we had on the three big moves that we've been talking about in December and today, we had a workshop at Poor House Bistro on September 23, and that is the one time before that that all of the streets in the Gardner and right along the tracks in the North Willow Glen neighborhood, they all received flyers in English and Spanish. I, we can, we can look at that some very sorry.
Sir, I'm sorry, you've spoken, we appreciate it, but...
Yeah, yeah, so those flyers were delivered by the outreach team.
Okay, and that's city staff that went out there?
It's actually a mix of city staff, ETA staff, consultants, all the folks who were working on outreach for the project.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jessica. All right, returning to Councilmember Prowl.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, as well. I think, just kind of following on the discussion and where it's at, and I think, I am fully aware, and I know Councilmember Davis is as well, as the mayor's been pointing out, the level of outreach, and specifically, obviously having to be able to get flyering door-to-door, because we know that that's some of the best, unfortunately, as I know as well, a number of times when flyers come to your, to your door, not everybody, right, understands or pays attention or sees what's going on in there. But we've also been communicating through our offices, through newsletters, outreach, neighborhood association meetings, and that's just for the last couple of years on this process, or almost couple of years on this process with the DISC. But as you just pointed out, Jessica, there's been ongoing conversations for close to a decade in regards to the growth, the different expansions, as the speaker talked about in regards to the two lanes to four, as we heard public comment over the last couple of months, even the, at one point, High-Speed Rail talking about the potential for five, and that's what brought up a lot of anxiety, which we were able to put that to rest at our last study session. So, but at the same time, I think, you know, as we know, that doesn't always mean, right, just because of all the outreach we do, everybody gets the message. And that's something that has come up, and certainly for me, is important as we move forward. So the only question I had for staff is, now in this next phase of mitigations, which for the community will be the most important aspect, do we have a strategy in place for us to work with our partner agencies to ensure our mitigation priorities are communicated, one, as we have been, but also lobbied for?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in terms of the strategy, we're actually starting with the other partner agencies at, first and foremost, can we define a project that by its design avoids some of the need to down-the-road mitigate? Meaning, is there a project that because it is designed as a separated and very well-sealed corridor, doesn't have some of the noise or vibration or safety externalities? So that's kind of the first step in the strategy, is design the best project moving forward in this corridor, but throughout the corridor as well. The second place where this goes is once the best project is kind of defined, then you do begin the California Environmental Quality Act and NEPA, national version of SEQA, processes to analyze for any additional potential impacts, noise, vibration, visual others. And so if that project, as designed, still has some impacts, then that SEQA and NEPA process, that's where that is identified and the mitigations are applied, because those can be very site-specific, and we don't know kind of all the effective pieces at this point in the project. And then finally, as I think it was Liz Scanlon who pointed out last week, in many communities, projects can also add on what are technically called betterments, which would be additional, not required as part of the project, not required per the SEQA, but put into place because the city, the partner agencies, the community find that they would make it better. So that's kind of the three-pronged strategy and the process for moving forward with the community's input.
Yeah, I'll add to that, Councilmember Prowl. So I think for the DISC process, we developed a specific outreach strategy for it as well, that certainly this council and the other partner agency boards, you know, kind of gave us guidance on, and we developed something pretty specific to try and get to this stage in the process. And I think we're now ready to develop what's the right outreach process for this next phase. You know, we have a phase now, we're going to then ultimately get into an environmental phase, a final design phase, and a construct, and I think as we move through each phase, we're going to continue to refine our outreach strategy to really address the needs at that phase, recognizing it's part of an overall kind of project development process from initial planning all the way through construction. So in this phase, I think we need to develop something pretty specific to where we're at in this phase, and I think we, as city staff, recognize a kind of a special responsibility to really think through, how do we engage, re-engage people, you know, in the, kind of the entirety of the area of the project as well? So I think we're going to take a specific look at the city staff and then develop that with our partner agencies.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you to our staff as well for, I think, the leadership role that the city took in this regard and with the DISC process, and really, I think, knowing the unease that was in the community with the high-speed rail process, and really wanting the city to step in and take that leadership role, I think we did that. And ultimately, having to come to some, some pretty tough decisions, but at the same time, I think what we can feel comfortable with is that we actually did vet this out the way that we should have and the way that the community deserved. And looking at all the option, things like, what I was interested in, things like moving all the rail out of the corridor if we were to do an aerial viaduct, and I think we can safely say, and I think, my council colleagues, especially Councilmember Davis, but also Jimenez, as far as, and our mayor, you know, for the work that you were all able to put in responding to the questions and concerns that we had, that our community had, and for this process, it has been a long journey to get to this point, but still a lot of work ahead, and appreciate all that work, and we already had the motion, and I'll be supporting that, so, thanks.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I just want to make sure, for the person who came and spoke, we're not at the project level yet, we're just talking about using the existing corridor for when Deeredon does get redone. There is no timeline for this project, there's no funding for this project, and in fact, there's no actual project yet. So we don't even know if we're going to use four tracks, it's up to four tracks. That's what we talked about at the study session last week, is that the max number of tracks would be four, but we don't even know if four are needed, or when the fourth track might be needed. So that's one of the things that we're working out. Jess, remind me, is, design at 2%? Is that kind of where we are?
Yeah, that's our, that's our estimate for kind of the conceptual planning level that we're... that we're at.
So we're just at, we're, we're literally at boxes and moving Legos around. We're not at, we have a design plan. So we've been talking about this for a year and a half, and if you live in North Willow Glen, you know that, that High Speed Rail has been having meetings for 10 years. So we're, we're still kind of in those conceptual phases, but we have been having, and one of my staff members is there to talk with you after, after we're done here, so you can meet with me and I can bring you up to speed on what we've been doing for the last year and a half, and you can be part of my newsletter as well, because as Councilmember Peralas stated, we are putting this information in our newsletters on a regular basis. So I want to make sure that you, you are engaged going forward, because this is a long-term process to get the funding, to get the final design. There will be many, many more meetings about finalizing this process, and it's all part of Deardong and the growth area. And I just wanted to make one more comment, and that is, I drive by that blighted property that you were talking about every single day. It drives me nuts. It's something that I've talked about with, with not only city staff, but, but with Google as well, and asked them if they could purchase the property. The property owner is not interested in selling, so they're, if they weren't going to sell to Google, they're not going to sell to the city, because we don't have as deep pockets as they do. So it's definitely something on, on our radar, but not something that we have control over because of private property rights. Thank you.
Until we have our code enforcement armed with drones, then we're going to get them. Yeah. Yeah, I just want to also express appreciation for the frustration that I know the gentleman feels, as many do if, if they're not aware of, of what's going on. And there has been an enormous amount of public conversation about this over several years, but I understand that it is often difficult in people's busy lives to be able to get to meetings and to understand the conversations that are happening, that may be happening down the street or elsewhere. And, you know, I, I actually felt a little bit of this frustration myself, because, sorry to go to personal story here, but we've been trying to find the house that my grandfather, my mom's side, lived on. It was on West Williams Street. We've been trying to find this for, for a couple of years to figure out, I wonder where he lived and, and all that. And it was actually a house that, that his parents, grandparents and his parents bought when they immigrated from Mexico, is Rosita Flores from Teodora Sevis. And we later discovered, after searching and searching through all these records, that the exact site on West Williams Street, which maybe you may recognize doesn't really exist except for a very small snippet, snippet in the Gardner neighborhood, essentially was paved over by 280. So that was the house at some point, but it's no longer. And I'm venturing to guess that back in those days, they did not have multiple public meetings and hearings and engagement with the community before houses disappeared for transportation projects. And so I am appreciative of the fact that this is a team at the city that is very deeply concerned about neighborhood impacts and how they affect families and neighborhoods. And I know that we are going to have a lot more conversation in the months ahead, and years ahead, I should say, because I think Councilmember Davis made a very good point, which is, there's no project yet. We're about $14 billion away from the segment of High Speed Rail that's going to connect San Jose with, some point somewhere near, I don't know, Madera, somewhere up there. So we've got a lot of money that needs to get allocated before this thing even becomes real, although obviously we're doing the planning now and would love to, to get to that point. And it will be many, many years before a shovel hits the ground. So we've got a lot more work to do with the community. I just want to thank, you know, certainly Jessica Zacco, I know she's spent a lot of hours on this in the community and with the technical teams, John Risto, Jim Orpall, Kim Wulash, everybody's been working so hard on this and in collaboration with many other partners. Also really want to thank Councilmember Ralph Peralas and Councilmember Dev Davis, who have been spending not a small share of their time and their staff's time also wrestling with all these issues in, really, at, at a very detailed level. And I really commend them and their teams for how seriously they've taken this, because the impacts of this aren't going to be felt by any of us while we're in office. It's going to be at some future year, and obviously we want to leave a better legacy for, for future generations than, than whatever condition we find the city in. So I appreciate everyone's hard work on this. I think Councilmember Crossco.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have a little graph of my own, if you could, if you could add that. So I know you all know me as the wonderful representative of Eastside, but before my lifetime in Eastside, I grew up on, in the Gardner area. And, and I, I'm putting this up because San Jose is very small, you know, in spite of the fact that we're growing rapidly. And I think I lived in every corner of the city of San Jose, but these are really about the most fondest memories that I have growing up in San Jose, because my family all worked at, at the Del Monte Canary Plant Number Three. I always have to say that, because that's how you differentiated it from the different other canneries. But I wanted to just show you a little bit of what my childhood was like in this beautiful, in this beautiful community. The, the little X towards the top that's circled, that's where I lived. I lived directly in front of Gardner Elementary. The X next to it were my cousins and their growing children. On Brown Street, there's an X on the corner. That was a, a house that my parents owned as well, and my father's sister, with her 11 children, lived in the main house. And upstairs, my father had what was, what could be considered like SROs, Single Residential Occupant, you know, they, and that was only used during the time that the cannery season was in, in, in full-blown season. And so relatives of ours would come out and they would stay with us, and he had, you know, probably 10 or 20 bedrooms upstairs. I'm sure it was all legal, Mayor. But across the street on Brown was another relative of mine. He was actually one of the first lottery winners in the state of California, ended up moving out to Gilroy because, well, he did well. Down the street on Brown, you see two X's in front of each other. Those were my cousins, their family, they were both my first cousins. Around the corner was my aunt and uncle, and in the basement below lived another entire family that was also relatives of mine. But I want to draw your attention to where, where I spent a lot of my childhood during the summers when I wasn't being supervised, which was on the train tracks. And of course, I would never condone it anymore. I was unsupervised. We were bored. We played on the terrain tracks, and when the train came by, we'd, we'd just jump off. And we're very lucky that we didn't lose a limb or, or even worse than that, because there was nothing to separate us from a speeding train. But all those X's there that you see that butt up against the park, Bebra Park, which is where I learned to swim, were our relatives of mine. My godmother, who was like my grandmother, my uncle, my cousins, and all of them had growing families. The little X next to the Caltrains was my father's oldest brother. He died in that house. That house eventually got torn down because of, they had to abate the ground that it was on, because it was right next to the trains. Now Habitat for Humanity actually rebuilt a house there, but that was the site of my, of my dear uncle's house and his huge family. And then just lastly, the last two X's at the bottom of the screen, my mother's brother, who was like her father, because that was the kind of age difference, and my grandfather died when my mom was very young, that was my godfather. He had a family of nine children. All of them have had minimum, I think, of five or six kids. He had two auxiliary homes in the back where his growing family lived. And, and so I'm very connected to this community. I don't represent it up here on the dais, but I'm very connected, and it's such a beautiful community. It's such a beautiful, it has a great deal of history, and, and it's, it's very close to my heart. My concerns, and I've expressed them already to Jessica, one is the safety as these, and I know it's not a project yet, but as these, as the number of trains increase and we start seeing them cut right through a neighborhood where there's still a lot of children, and I anticipate that in the next 10 to 20 years, we'll see more children. We'll just, you know, it's just a great community, that we make sure that it's going to be safe. I have easy access where the horseshoe is. We just walk right onto it. So I've expressed this to Jessica, and, and I'm reassured that there's going to be safety measures there. But also, and you've clarified it, there's been a great deal of outreach, and the council members are doing a great job of that. There's always someone that's left out or doesn't get the information, and this is really going to be a huge impact on the community. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of it. And, you know, if it's coming, it's coming, and let's let people know. But thank you for, for allowing me to indulge a little bit in my, in my childhood memories, but this, again, I just really wanted to put it up as a visual of, of where our family started. And, and a lot of the family, all those little X's, they still live in many of those homes. And of course, we don't, but, but it's a very, it's a wonderful community. Again, very near and dear to my heart. I want to make sure that the kids are safe and, and that our neighborhoods are just well-aware of what's about to happen.
Thank you. Other comments? Questions? Okay. Anybody else have family from the Gardner neighborhood other than myself and Councilmember Crossco? All right. Okay. All right. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for all the work. I know we've got more work ahead, but that's an important step. Okay. We now have time, I believe, to interview the potential appointee to the Board Administration for Police and Fire Retirement Plan.
Mayor, unfortunately, Mr. Lee is not here yet.
Oh, okay. I have, one person liked to speak on open forums, why don't I jump ahead to that? And maybe he'll get here just in the nick of time. Travis Cooper? Boy, we've never been accused of wrapping up early before. I don't really know what to do. Welcome, Mr. Cooper.
I'm a member of the City Council. My name is Travis Cooper. I'm with the California Municipal Finance Authority. A little winded from the jog downstairs. But I'm here today, the city of San Jose is a member of the CMFA. The CMFA is a joint powers authority in the state of California. We specialize in private activity bond issuances throughout the state. Over 300 members, cities and counties are part of our organization. And we also, we have a PACE program that I wanted to introduce to the City Council. It's a commercial PACE program. PACE is Property-Assessed Clean Energy, and we had a application from a commercial hotel, Shiloh Suites, to finance $26 million worth of energy efficiency improvements, things that qualify for PACE financing. So I've been dealing with the Environmental Services Department a little bit to try to get our program approved. And like I say, the city's a member of the CMFA already, but you have to pass a resolution to opt into the PACE program. And this would just be commercial PACE, it wouldn't be residential PACE. And even if you wanted to approve just this specific project, that would work as well. So I just brought a preliminary kind of analysis of the project as far as a draft resolution that has been approved by Jones Hall, who's bond counsel on, or who would be bond counsel on this project, and a draft staff report that I wanted to leave with the city clerk.
Thank you. Yeah, either with clerk or Assistant Jemfer, either would be fine. Just so you know, I think you're probably aware, we've, we've approved three PACE providers' programs already, and so certainly that's something that comes to us through staff. And so I believe you're working with Fire and Wildlife Services now? Is that right?
Yeah, I am. And I, I mentioned them, that they would, that I'd come and just bring this to the, the board. And I also wanted to mention, one of the things that seems to be holding it up, and I don't mean to take it, well, finish, we do, part of our program is we do give 25% of our issuance fee back to cities. So I know it takes city staff resources, but it'd be approximately $48,000 to go back to the city for the time they spent to get this on the agenda.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. I believe Mr. Lee has just arrived, is that right? Just in time. Perfect. Welcome. Mr. Lee, would you like to come on down and appreciate, well, we'll call the item, it's item, let's see here, 3.6? Public Appointment. Mr. Lee, I just want to express my appreciation for your willingness to serve. I know that it is a commitment of significant amount of time and energy, and appreciate your, your background here that you bring to this, this, this role. Maybe you could just take a minute or two to describe why you'd like to serve and how you think you might be able to contribute to the board's work.
Okay, great. Well, hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to participate, and I do apologize for being late. Heavy traffic on 85. So the reason why I would like to serve is because, one, I have investment experience that I think I could be very helpful to the Police and Fire Pension Fund. And, two, I wanted to combine my, what I know with how I'd like to help in a volunteering basis. So it's just a combination of my investment experiences over 25 years in both private equity and venture capital, combination of finance investments to, to bring to bear with the, you know, the resources and the, the goals of the Police and Fire Fund, Pension Fund.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, are there questions from members of the council? I do have one question, and I just want to say again, thank you for your interest, and obviously you've got great qualifications and background. As, as you look at the, the state of our Police and Fire Fund now, the plan, where do you believe the greatest amount of attention of the, of the, of the plan board should be directed?
I, I think it's a combination of near term and long term. I, I think the long term is actually more important, because this, this deals with the retirement funds for employees and ex-employees over the course of 30, 20, 30, 40 years. And so it's the obligation to make sure that as caretakers and being able to be responsible for providing the right kind of investment advice, to allow for the growth of the assets to compensate for the near term, which I, I think is the, the underfunding, so to speak, of, of the, of the pension plan compared to the costs and the other factors like lifetime expectancy of the, of the members. So I think it's really, at the end of the day, it's long term where we have to focus. Well, I, I would like to help participate in, I should say.
And, sir, your background is primarily in private equity, is that right?
That's correct. It's private equity, but the subset of that is venture capital, which, as you know, has sort of an outsized reputation as, as an asset class, but in general, private equity is the larger asset class, and my experience is in both.
And I know that sometimes when we have a particular background, we've got that tool in our toolbox, if it's a hammer, then the whole world looks like a nail. And I guess in terms of the asset allocation that you look at, the plan has today, does your background in private equity tell you that we should be shifting significantly toward private equity? Or are there other asset classes you think are perhaps under-invested in, in the plan as we, as we look at today?
Yeah, without, without going into a lot of details, because I, I don't have a perfect crystal ball, and I don't know what the needs and goals specifically of the, of the Police and Fire Fund, Pension Fund. I, I believe that you have to keep some minimum percentage in private equity, because it allows you to have what's called alpha, to sort of beat the market, so to speak. And also, it allows you, from alternative investments point of view, to diversify against other asset classes, as in fixed income and stock. I would, I would also indicate, as I did in my application, I think international exposure, I think is going to be a tremendous opportunity for growth in, I would say, different types of asset classes, whether it's real or whether it's in equities. But international, I would say, is, is one area.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. All right, are there other questions, Councilmember, yep?
Yes, thank you. So your point about alphas, well-taken, and you don't want to, you want to beat inflation and all that. And this council has seen in the last few years, you know, our economy is, on the, on the whole, gone up. You know, people fear there's a recession coming, but on the whole, it's, it's been good, the US economy. And yet we're told that in our particular situation in San Jose, we have a mature fund, you know, just a few years off, people begin drawing from their pensions. And so we, we can't bear too much risk, because, you know, we have to pay out. So given that unique, you know, circumstance, do you have any insight, given your background to, to, you know, how to adjust for equities and the, the to, you know, how to adjust for equities and the risk burden?
Yeah, well, that's a good point that you raise about equities, because the risk-return profile is significantly different than, say, fixed income. I would say, based on what I know, that when you talk about alternatives, it's a relatively small percentage of what the assets are in terms of allocation. And at the end of the day, it's going to be some judicious mix of equities and fixed income, whether it's domestic or international. And I would focus probably, you know, my crystal ball's not perfect either. I think I've been looking for, in some ways, a downturn for the last several years. Like a lot of investors, we haven't gotten it right. But the one thing that we do know is that it is a cycle, and things will naturally change and potentially go down. And so I think when you factor in interest rates and where the macroeconomy will go, I would argue, probably lean towards potentially a little more fixed income and maybe a little less on equity, but that's just sort of a broad statement right now. But I think it's more complicated than people would say, given it's an election year and given the fact that maybe the cycles are different, but they will have an end.
But I guess what I was trying to get at is, when we're talking about investments, everybody just kind of broadly thinks about long term, you know? But there's a horizon when you're going to start drawing from, and the closer you get to your horizon point, the less risky you have to be.
That's right.
And given the fact that our workforce, you know, is, our horizon is shorter rather than longer, does that complicate? I know it does, but like, given that extra wrinkle, do you have anything to share about, you know, San Jose's investment strategy or what you would advise?
Well, I think you could look at it from two points of view. If you look at the near term, obviously, on a risk-return basis, you would look at things that are less equity-based, you know, fixed income, for example. And as a percentage of the portfolio, I think that's what the, both the trustees and the investor group have to figure out, what that mix is. The longer term does give you more, bigger return, and that helps the 30-year horizon, but it's not a large percentage of what the pie is. So at the end of the day, it's about the size, it's about the mix of the pie, as opposed to how much goes into that high-risk, you know, alternative assets. Because it does have, there's a lot of focus on it, but you have to look at the core allocation, and that's, you know, real estate, fixed income, bonds, and equity. I don't have a great answer for that, but it's really, it's really the allocation today compared to the smaller amount that you need to diversify for tomorrow.
So I guess my last question will be, given that we're not fully funded and we're trying to, you know, catch up as much as possible, and that's an argument for equity, more equities, to kind of catch up and more risk, to kind of grow that pie, but then also given the fact that, you know, there are people retiring this year, next year, and next five years, on a scale of, you know, conservative to risk tolerance, I guess, what is your risk tolerance, I guess? Could you describe your approach towards that?
Well, I think it's judicious. You have to balance it. Like, you mentioned sort of alternative assets, I'll go back to that again. If you had to choose, for example, you may lean towards the KKRs of the world, sort of the private equity groups that have a little less volatility, so to speak. So then you're still in alternatives, but you're dealing with less volatility. So I would say on the margins, a little bit of growth on the fixed side and less aggressive on the alternative side is, I think, probably one course of action, because then you sort of protect yourself both on the larger part of the pie and also not taking on extraordinary amounts of risk, given that there's uncertainty about how the macroeconomic picture will be. That would be what I would do.
Great. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Right, any other questions? All right. Mr. Lee, thank you for taking the time. We'll just take a moment then with ballots, is that right? Okay, wonderful.
One last thing, Council. I should mention, I did speak to Council after yesterday's orientation session, and they explained to me the potential for conflict with vendors that the city or the Police and Fire Pension Group may belong to. In other words, your service providers, whether council or investment managers. And I just want to just let you know, because Council advised me to say, that I still need to check all of the conflicts, because as an investor, we invest in different companies, and so there are different investor groups within each of these companies, and therefore, I need to cross-check against all the ones that the city already has committed to as far as investment managers.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I assume, since we do have many active folks in the financial industries who have undoubtedly conflicts, that they simply recuse themselves from those votes, is that right?
And our conflicts memo touches upon that.
Okay, great. So I don't think that will be prohibitive, but certainly, one I'm, case-by-case basis. This should not resemble the Iowa caucus.
Significantly less choices, Mayor.
And that's 11 votes for Howard Lee.
Wonderful. Mr. Lee, thank you again for your willingness to serve. We're very grateful. The vote was unanimous to support your appointment. Thank you. With that, the meeting is adjourned.